Good morning, everyone. Hello, hello? Oh, there it is. Good morning, everyone. Are we about ready to get started? We're all like wide awake and ready to go? Or maybe not. But we'll pretend. So, my name is Deb Hurley. I am co-president of Colorado Pro of SPJ. We are so thrilled that you are here. It's going to be a great day of learning and having some fun and meeting people and for students, maybe getting jobs. Jobs are good. So, we are really excited to have you here. We have a couple of dignitaries with us. Hey, Mackenzie, could you stand up? This is Mackenzie Romero. She is our Region Nine Coordinator and she is also representing Utah Headliners, which is a Utah Professional Chapter. So, we're welcoming Mackenzie. And Julia, did you make it in the room? She was getting coffee. Oh, there she is. There's Julia with her coffee in hand. She is the president of the New Mexico Professional Chapter, which is called the Rio Brand Chapter. So, please welcome her. Before we get started, I want to tell you that putting on a conference like this takes a village. And so, I just want you to know that the Colorado Professional Chapter Board has put in hours and hours and hours to make this happen. And I wanted to just publicly thank them for all of their hard work, including my co-president, Deb Bell, and the rest of the board. Some are in the room, some are probably handing out name tags and all those other things that have to happen. A couple of quick reminders for you. If you haven't found them yet, the bathrooms are across from the registration table. That's always a good thing to know. Remember that lunch is on your own. We'll break from 11:30 till 1:30. There's a restaurant upstairs. There are other places in downtown Denver you can get to. What will happen after this program is we will be taking about a 30-minute break because they are going to put up a wall and split the chairs. And so, we'll start the first set of panelists at 10:15. But the food and the coffee will still be out in the hallway. So, it's all good. You can mingle, get to know everybody, network, all that good stuff. Oh, and now, if you didn't know, I was a professor for 21 years, so I need my visual aids. And I do have them. Colorado Pro decided, rather than doing some sort of swag bag, because usually you end up with all kinds of weird stuff, what we have done is we have got new coffee mugs. And so, they're pretty cool. One has the SPJ logo, the other one says, "Journalists Run on Coffee." Yeah. So, what you can do is pick these up any time during the day. The great thing is, the company who made these for us has them individually packaged in their little boxes, and so, they should be good. So, you can pick these up any time during the day. So, there you go. Okay. Done with the visual aids. Sorry, I was, I was a professor for 21 years. Okay. Before I talk about our sponsors, just so you know, SPJ has its Ethics Week in mid-April, and we have a webinar going on. It's going to be April 17th from 11:30 to 12:30, lunch hour time, and it's called, "When and How to Say No." Do you want to know what that is? That is going to deal with dealing with sources. And when they try to press you to write a story and you don't think it's really a story, how do you tell them no? Or things like that. So, we're going to do that on April 17th. If you look at our social media, you'll be able to find out more about it and get the link so that you can take advantage of that. So, this event would not happen without our sponsors. And we really thank them because thanks to sponsors, students are here for free. They did not have to pay to register. So, that's a great thing. So, let me just run through these really quick. Sponsors are: The Denver Gazette, the University of Colorado, the Kiplinger Program in Public Affairs, the Colorado Sun, Arapahoe Community College Pinnacle, The Denver Post, University of Denver Department of Media, Film, and Journalism Studies, Wyoming Public Media, Rocky Mountain Student Media, Inside the News in Colorado, and the Array County Plain Dealer. But there's one we need to highlight just a little bit more, and that's Advantus Media because they are our presenting sponsor. And to kick off our morning, Vanessa Otero is going to come up and chat with you about Advantus Media.
Thank you, Deb. Good morning, everyone. How's it going? I'm a walk-arounder, so, sorry photographer. It's great to be with you. It's absolutely my honor to be the presenting sponsor here for the Society of Professional Journalists Chapter. The work that you do is so important, and I'd love to share a little bit about my company and you can, it'll be pretty obvious, the intersection and alignment with what we do, with what you all do. We rate the news for reliability and bias. So, I missed, I already missed something. I already missed a side. There we go. You may be familiar with our famous media bias chart. How many of you by show fans have seen some version of this floating on the internet? Wow, most of you. Okay, exciting. So, we rate the news on two dimensions, which is overall reliability, top to bottom, and left to right political bias. It's small, I have bigger versions that you can take home with you in the hallway. But what we put right at the very, very top, at the apex, for highest reliability, news and information sources, is a work that journalists do, the original fact reporting, especially that high effort and investigative type. Because really, without it, the rest of the media landscape, it wouldn't even exist, you know? Opinion, analysis, there's folks talking about the news. And anyone with a microphone, anyone with a website can give a hot take, can give an opinion about the news, but only journalists create the news. We rate things for left to right for political bias. And a couple of things to know about our rating system, middle is not best. Highest reliability is best. So, stuff that's at the top of the media bias chart, that's highest reliability. And you can tell because there's stuff in the middle that's low, so, not great. You might want to know how we rate the news. That's everybody's first question. How we rate the news is with, through a content analysis methodology. We use panels of human analysts, and the panel, we have about 45 analysts on our team now, and they're from left, right, and center political perspectives. Because everybody comes to us and says, you know, "Oh, you rate the news for reliability and bias? But aren't you biased?" And yes, absolutely, we're biased because we're humans. So, the question to ask is, how do we mitigate our bias? And it's through panels of people with diverse perspectives, and it's through being as granular as possible with our methodology. I can talk, I could talk about our methodology like this entire eight hours, but I won't. But if you have questions about it, I'll be around and we can chat. A lot of people don't know that we are a media ratings data company with a suite of products and services. So, what we do with this, with this media ratings data, if you go to our site, you'll see an interactive chart like this that shows you individual articles and episodes that we've rated for each individual news source. Because the problems that we seek to address probably hit home for a lot of you, the loss of reliable journalism, like the shutdown of newspapers all across the country, misinformation, polarization. And news ratings for reliability and bias really does help solve these problems, but it takes everyone. These are big, intractable problems seemingly, and there are so many stakeholders in the media ecosystem. And really, they all need news ratings. Individual citizens, news publishers, advertisers, social media companies, academia, education, government. And what we do for the public, the continuing public, is we provide resources. You can go to our website. We have a free mobile app, and millions of people use these every year to look up the reliability and bias of news sources. Because there are some that people are very familiar with, there are new ones that pop up all the time that are excellent, but people have just never heard of them. And then, there are ones that you get like forwarded in an email from a relative, and you're like, "What is this?" And if you look it up, you're like, "Oh, okay, yeah, that tracks." We also, obviously, the education system is really important, so we have media literacy tools for educational institutions, mostly for high school and college. And we have data for researchers. And today, Advantus data has been cited in dozens of academic publications because with our data, you can take reliability and bias, news consumption, and compare it to other things. So, across a lot of social disciplines, researches have found it useful. You might want to know, like, okay, cool, like, that's a great service, but what's your business? Like, how do we actually, you know, make money off this? So, our business is primarily in the media and advertising industry. We came across a really niche sort of need. Some of you may be familiar with this problem, but over the last 10 years, a lot of advertisers have, have pulled away from advertising in news publications out of a concern for brand safety. Brand safety meaning they don't want their ads showing up next to negative scary words on the internet like war, or shooting, or Trump. And they, you know, just, it's polarizing, you know? However, what we've, what we've shown, this is really, it's been a wrong-headed concern, but for the last 10 years, it's been a really overarching concern in the industry. So, so many brands have pulled their advertising dollars away from news publications, and it's been really devastating for news publishers. So, what we do is, we show brands that is actually not detrimental to their brands to advertise in news, as long as it's highly reliable and minimally biased, even if it is next to those like scary words and topics, polarizing topics. So, we work, these are logos of advertising technology companies that we work with to help advertisers identify where they should put their ad dollars. And we've been successfully able to move millions of dollars over to journalism just in the last year or so. So, woo, more of that, yeah. So, what do we, what do we ask for news publishers? Not much. Just keep doing, doing the thing that you are doing. Do the work, the great work of journalism. And many of the news publications that you are associated with, we have already rated, we've rated over 4,000 news sources. So, if we've rated your news source highly, then it is highly reliable and minimally biased, we'd love for you to let your audience know that. You can get this Advantus Media Certified Reliable News Source Badge. It's free. Well, just get in contact with us, and we'll give you a brand kit with the logos and everything. And the other thing we, some newsrooms have taken interest in is learning more about our methodology in order to maximize the scores for reliability and bias. In today's environment, so many folks receive complaints about bias, and they're trying their best to not, to mitigate and be as fair as possible, and they're like, "Well, what possibly, what more could I possibly do?" And it's not about false balance, or just trying to get, you know, quotes from, quotes from other sides. It's, there's more to it. When you have fact-dense reporting, it's one of the best things you can do to increase reliability and minimize bias. And we can walk through the things that we look for in our rubric that increase that trust in a news audience. That's all. I'll be out here hanging out. All right? Thanks.
Just a quick reminder, everybody, the breakout, there's going to be some breakout sessions in the aptly named library right across the hall. And they'll be dividing this room up as, as Deb said earlier, a couple people were asking where the other breakout rooms are. They're right here. All right. So, again, good morning, everybody. Thank you again so much for coming to the SPJ Region Nine Conference, brought to you by the Colorado Pro Chapter. I want to give one more quick shout-out to all the board members. We all worked really hard. So, my name is Dennis Hespeny. I'm the city editor for the Denver Gazette. A lot of the information that I'm about to give you, it came from the Denver Gazette's senior arts writer, John Moore, who was the sports editor at The Denver Post. He was Woody Page's editor during the great Denver newspaper war. I get the honor of introducing District Two Denver City Councilman Kevin Flynn. Kevin has really been a public servant for almost all of his 34-year career, first as a journalist and then as a councilmember. He started at the Rocky Mountain News in 1981, right about the time when I lived in a southwest Denver neighborhood called Harvey Park and attended Mullen High School, Ghost Kings. My mom still lives in Kevin's district and says he's doing a pretty good job. He has been re-elected twice. In 1984, Kevin covered the assassination of Jewish radio host Alan Byrd. It was a shocking crime because of its brutality and its brazenness of shooting a popular personality on his home driveway. As a Rocky reader, the coverage riveted me. It's part of what made me want to join the school newspaper as a reporter. The rest is history. He and Gary Gerhart were part of a team that were immediately assembled by the Rocky Mountain News to track the investigation into the murder and into the dark underworld of white supremacy that was growing in America. Their work turned into a book called The Silent Brotherhood, which was first published in 1989. As many of you know, it was the basis for the recent movie, The Order, starring Jude La. No, Jude La did not play Kevin Flynn. It was described as a monumental creative accomplishment four decades in the making, and I think that's true. So, Kevin stayed with the Rocky covering the mayor and city hall until the paper was closed in 2009, effectively ending the Denver newspaper war, till the Denver Gazette started. He was first elected to the city council in 2015, but he always kept the journalism motto that he lived by, "Front and Center," which is elected official work. Sunshine best disinfects, not bleach. Let's everybody give it up for Kevin Flynn.
Thank you. Boy, this is what a career in journalism does to you. That is my original Rocky Mountain News photo ID on my employee badge. Isn't that awful? I really appreciate that first presentation, by the way, because I've looked at that bell curve, and I always wonder where the Rocky Mountain News would have been on that. We were more conservative than the Denver Post, but I remember one time coming back down from city and county building, and we were being picketed by that group from Topeka, that Westboro Baptist Church, you know, God hates gays and all that. And the guy's sandwich board said, "Liberal bias pervades the Rocky." I'm thinking, "Have you met Vince Carroll? Have you met Jay Ambrose?" Let me put on my glasses, and I will try to be as efficient with time as possible. When I see them drawing the separators to divide the rooms, I'll know I've talked too long. But first of all, thank you so much for the invitation to speak here. I was president of the Colorado Pro Chapter in, I think, 92, maybe, 92 or 93. I don't know if we have records that would, would show that. No, they're on stone tablets. In the early, at the time, I never imagined, I couldn't have imagined, it would have been anathema to think that I'd be an elected official. I mean, I covered these bozos. And if anybody's been on the fourth floor of the city and county building, you go by the city council chamber, you've seen the mugshots of the 13 council members. And when I was a reporter, the press room was on the other side of the council office. I walked by this rogues' gallery, and I would shake my head and say, seriously, I'd say, "Look at that collection of bozos." And it's made me acutely aware that now that my mugshot has been there for 10 years now, that there are other people, members of the public, walking by those pictures and saying, "Look at that collection of bozos." Because of the dialogue that takes place in a civic arena these days. It took place even then. It's worse now, but that has made me incredibly humble about what I'm doing. And if there's one thing I'm most proud of about myself, it's my humility. That took too long. If I was a journalist, I covered these people. I couldn't possibly be one of them, but Scripps gave me no choice. They put me out on the street at the age of 56. I had done nothing else in my working career other than jobs in college. I worked in a steel mill, I was a member of the United Steelworkers, worked in a printing plant, but I really had no job skills. I was thrown out of work. All I had done my whole career was find shit out and tell people. And that's, what can I do? I didn't know how to dig a ditch, I didn't know how to drive a truck. I think the only thing I was qualified for then was to run for office. I'm in a council committee room, and I get a kick out of showing that to people because they don't believe it's me. I moved here from Jersey, I kind of looked like, you know, one of the cast of Jersey Boys. And I'm in Room 391, the council committee room, and some of the newer members said, "We just found out that there's a restroom right outside. There's this double doorway that goes down a secret stairwell to the second floor, and off on the side, there is a bathroom that we can use." They were going up to the fourth floor, they used bathroom. I said, "You didn't know that?" I said, "Well, let me tell you. When I was covering this city council, this third floor and right below it was the clerk and recorder. This was the deed room, the dusty book and page, real estate records and all that. And right where the restroom is, used to be a landing where they had the racks, like you see in the library with the newspapers on the spindles and all that. But these racks had the canvas maps of some, all the subdivisions in the city. And I used to sit there at a table and use that. And they're looking at me like I'm a dinosaur, because you look up all this stuff online now. I mean, you really can." And so, and they said, "Well, what, when was this?" I said, "Well, this was, this was like back about 1981 when I moved here." And Councilwoman Serena Gonzalez-Gutierrez looks at me and says, "I was born in 1981." And that really struck me. I don't know at what stage you are in your career, if you're just beginning, if you're at the tail end. Carol, you just left the tail end. It flies by. When you reach the end of your career, you won't believe how quickly it all happened. Just remember that. Today, city hall, city and county building doesn't even have a press room. That's how, that's how things have gone downhill, in my view. So, that really brought me down to earth, and it made me realize that talking today to y'all, to some of the younger folks here, about the great newspaper war of the 1980s would be like when I went into the Rocky newsroom in the 1980s and hearing people talk about covering the Dust Bowl. It's like, it doesn't have any relationship to my experience. So, I hope, I hope I can bridge those decades for some of the younger folks here, some of the ones of my generation or just, you know, just after me will understand a lot of this. The path I took to my career really didn't lead to journalism. I majored in philosophy in college, and I think that prepared me for a career in journalism because in philosophy, I studied the area of epistemology, the study of knowledge. How do you know that you know this? And I thought that was better preparation and rigorous training for me than going to, and I apologize to any journalism professors and students here, for me, that was better preparation than going to a journalism class, was how do you know what you know? When, when can you stop asking questions? So, I was inspired to pursue a career in journalism because of my political activism in the 60s, the anti-war movement. I, my first political involvement was a volunteer for Gene McCarthy for president when he ran against Lyndon Johnson in 68. I covered my '64 Chevy with McCarthy daisies, if anybody remembers the daisies on the back of the cars. The Poor People's Campaign, Martin Luther King organized the Southern Christian Leadership Conference to do the Poor People's Campaign, Resurrection City on the, on the mall in DC. And he was assassinated that April, as we know, and Ralph Abernathy continued with it. And I was just so inspired by all that I was being active in, that I started writing letters to the editor of my local paper, Easton, Pennsylvania, The Easton Express, which just recently stopped printing a paper. They are now totally online at a website called Lehigh Valley Live. You like that sign over there online? Well, some people prefer, you know, they like to hold something in their hands other than a laptop or a phone. But I wrote letters to the editor of my local paper, and the editor called me down. He says, "I really like the way you express yourself. You ought to think about a career in journalism." And so, I did. And when I graduated, I became a local government reporter in South Jersey outside of Philadelphia, Gloucester County Times. Then, I had two kids, I needed to make more money. They don't make a lot of money at a small paper. So, I started applying all over the country, and lo and behold, out in Denver, The Los Angeles Times, Times Mirror had just purchased The Denver Post the year before, and they took it to morning publication to go head-to-head with The Rocky Mountain News. And I said, "That's going to be a fun place to work. Plus, they have the guild, they have a union, so I'll probably make more money than what I'm earning here as a city editor in a small South Jersey newspaper." So, I came out here, and somebody know Al Knight, the Prince of Darkness? He, he was an assistant managing editor, and he interviewed me, and he said, "Mr. Flynn, why would you want to come out to Denver, move your family, sell your house?" I actually said, "I see that you've actually sold your house already." He says, "Do you think that's wise?" And I said, "Mr. Knight, it's going to be a great newspaper war out here. Times Mirror has deep pockets, and it's going to be a lot of money spent, and so, I think that's going to be great." And he says, "Well, you know, anybody here from Channel 7, from Scripps?" Okay, so I want to make sure. And Al says, "Hey, Scripps Howard has deep pockets too. Their problem is they have tiny little arms." That turned out, that turned out to be true, didn't it? So, it was just, it was a great time to be in journalism. And they say, "This was America's," yeah, I think in everybody's view, the consensus is that this was America's last great city newspaper war between the news and the post. We hated to get beat on a story. I know so did the other guys up the street. Although, one time, one of my competitors literally walked away from interviewing a source on a really good story when I walked up. I parked my car and walked up to him, and the two of us were there, news and the post. And my competitor walked away, and he said to the guy, "This was supposed to be exclusive to me, so I'm not covering it all. Your story won't be in the post." I said, "Well, that's fine, it'll be in the news." So, sometimes the competition took a lighter side, and I think I can say this now because statute of limitations is up, but I won't mention a name, but there was a reporter, a city hall reporter from the Post who would park on Delaware Street in the press-only spots next to our office, which is now the city jail, you know, right? I joked that they didn't, we didn't need a zoning change when we went from newspaper to city jail. So, this, the city hall reporter would park there so that, because she didn't feel like parking up on Capitol Hill and walking to city and county buildings. So, I went to the marketing department, I got a bunch of Rocky Mountain News bumper stickers. And at that time, her slogan was, "Rocky Mountain News, if you live here, you get it." And so, I put a bumper sticker on her car. And then, the next day when she parked there, I noticed it had been removed, so I put another one on. I had about 50. And then, one day, I came back, I started putting them on her front bumper, sometimes her back, sometimes I put it real low, so a driver behind her would see it, but if she's standing there, she might not. Then, one day, I'm coming down Tremont, and I see her walking down Colfax to get to her car, and this, this made my heart feel good. And she comes up to her car, and she goes, she goes to the back bumper, she goes to the front bumper. That day, I hadn't put one on. That made my day. Pretty soon, pretty soon, she stopped parking there. That was my whole point. I don't know, how did we not win the war with stuff like that? I'll tell you what I say, though, and I mean this seriously. Some, I tell people, I don't think the Rocky Mountain News lost the newspaper war. I think we surrendered at a better time and under better terms. The guild really went to bat for us over the pension fund, and so, I was able to survive 14 months of unemployment while my wife was thinking of going half-time and retiring as a teacher. And so, the guild helped my family stay afloat, my household stay afloat. Thank you, Denver Newspaper Guild. The competition, though, relied on reporters working their beats as hard as they could. In Denver, we had two reporters on city hall, and the Post had two reporters on city hall, and we, and we worked in the building. We didn't sit at our desks, you know, a couple blocks away. We worked in the building. We were allowed, I don't know if this is a luxury today or not, y'all can raise your hand and let me know if you all have this luxury. We could spend a good amount of unproductive time working the beat, talking to people, trying to find stories, instead of being assigned a story and go get it. Working a beat meant you had to get to know everyone in the building, and you had to listen to their stories. The woman who was a city council admin in the front desk who greeted everybody that I would try to get stories out of, today, she's my city council aide. She's worked for city council for 33 years, and she worked for my predecessor, and I kept her on. Those long-term relationships really paid off for beat reporting. You had to know the cops, you had to know the politicians if you were going to get the stories. And sometimes it meant three, four, or five days. I wasn't turning in any copy because I'm trying to develop a story here. Does anybody, do people have that luxury still? Does anybody, do people have that luxury still?
No.
That, that is a tremendous loss in journalism. And when you're covering a beat, you turn up more information than you can use. I don't know if you all have the same equation that I use, but I felt, I often had to gather ten times more material than I could possibly fit into column inches I was, I was assigned in order to inform the ten percent of the information that would go into the story and make it contextually accurate. That was my epistemology training at work. That was my equation. I had to have ten times as many notes as I could possibly use so that I can understand a hundred percent of the story in order to get only ten percent of that information into the paper. I mean, do people in today's environment have that luxury? It's, I hope you do. Because without that foundation of data and facts, I think sometimes I'm afraid that what we tell our readers and our viewers can be as thin as cheesecloth. And I hope, I hope that being an SPJ helps you develop that rigor that, that allows you to inform, contextually inform accurate reporting. You want to be at the top of that bell curve. It distresses me to see that. There were so many on the left and the right. We want to be in the center because we want to tell people it's actually happening. The, the amount of things that I read, that I'm intimately involved in, that lack that context distress me sometimes that way. I'm doing this and that's, that's not what I did. That's not what I said. That's not what I meant. When the book came out that Dennis was mentioning, I did a lot of interviews with book reviewers and I would get the clippings from my publisher in New York. And I would see my own quotes misattributed, out of context. And boy, did that open my eyes. That was nineteen eighty-nine and that really helped me, I think, be a better reporter. In the newspaper war though, and some of the veterans will remember this, a lot of the reporters switched sides. You know, just like some, the running back for the Broncos, one day will be playing for the Raiders the next season, right? The soldiers, you know, we could trade loyalties. Your competitor one day will be your partner the next. I covered city hall pretty much from the nineteen eighty-three, Penya, Tooley, McNichols mayor's race, clear through to Wellington Webb's third term over twenty years. I just had lunch with Wellington the other day. He still acts like he's running for office. Took him ten minutes to get to the table because everybody, he's glad handing everybody down the road. I said, what the hell are you running for? I mean, you're retired. The last nine years, I covered the transportation beat. And that saved my life, my household because covering RTD and Fast Tracks and CDOT prepared me when the paper closed to eventually apply for work at RTD. And I was hired as the communications manager for the Eagle Fast Tracks Project. That's the project that built the train to the airport. My job interview was given to me as a courtesy. I got the oral interview as a courtesy, they told me later. Because they worked with me, they said, well, let's give Kevin a chance. And they told me later that I told them things about their own project that they didn't know. Because, because I did that hundred percent of the research to report the ten percent. When I was the manager, not long after that when I was working, the project manager having a meeting around my cubicle and he explained something about the public-private partnership financing end of the deal. And this is a little disappointing to me, but he said, the way he explained it to everybody, when he was done, they walked away and I said, I said, Brian, I said, that's not, when I was covering this, I said, you told me something different. That's not what you told me. And he looks at me with his eyes wide, he goes, we lied. So I said, I'm not going to do that. I'm not going to do that. Once when I was at, on the Eagle project, the airport train, the private contractor used highway standards, Ashto standards for the rail bridges in four locations. And we were trying to tell them, you know what? You have to turn this back to us in thirty years. We will own this and it has to be in perfect condition. Maybe you should use Aremo standards, the railroad right-of-way engineering standard. And so they decided to dismantle four bridges, remove the girders that already been put in place all along the corridor. And so I'm prepared for this public relations nightmare. I said, as soon as the post or Channel Four or somebody finds out about this, they're going to really rip us. And so I had my key message prepared. My key message was, and it got rejected by my boss, bridges so nice, we're building them twice. But I have to tell you, competition really died down when the Rocky closed. It's one of Denver's biggest losses was that the newspaper war had to be over. Because no one from any news outlet called me about that story. And the girders that were wasted, some of them you can still see. If you take the train to the airport, sit on the right side and when you cross Sand Creek and you go under Central Park Boulevard, cross Sand Creek about five hundred feet up, you'll see nine, I think it's nine or so girders, concrete girders sitting off to the right of way on the side. And those are the girders that they had to remove. No one ever called me about that story. I'm sorry to say. I worked with two-time Pulitzer Prize winner Lou Kildare, who passed away about a year ago, on several stories. He introduced me when I moved here in eighty-one to a lot of the old timers, which I'm now one of them, that, that knew a lot about the city and the stories that already were rolling it in play. Sam Luskey, anybody remember Sam Luskey? He was, he worked for McNichols, his PR firm did. He was a former city editor at the Rocky. And every Friday, we'd go over for happy hour and drink vodka martinis in his office at the First National Bank. And he would tell us, you know, who was screwing who, what was going on, what the deals are coming down. Because he knew it all, because he was tight with McNichols. And boy, did I learn so much from Sam. Lou and I had a habit when we worked the beat. Late Friday afternoons, we would go over to the Denver District Court Clerk's Office. And at that time you could go, they let you behind the, you know, the little door. You could go back to the file room. And we would just pull all of that week's search warrant affidavits. And we just started reading search warrant affidavits. And right around that time, one of the biggest mistakes that Denver police ever made, they did a no-knock warrant at a house at the wrong address. And they ended up killing a Mexican immigrant by the name of Ishmael Mena. Anybody remember Ishmael Mena? He worked at the Coca-Cola bottling plant. He lived a couple of blocks away. They were at the wrong address. When they stormed up the stairs, he was in his bedroom sleeping because he worked the night shift. He heard this noise, he pulled a gun. And the SWAT team kicks open his door and he's got a gun. He's standing on his bed, ready to whoever's invading his home. And police shot and killed him. It was because of a Denver police sergeant who had a bad informant, gave him the wrong address. And so Lou and I started pulling all the no-knock warrants for like a year and a half. And we, we started doing data collection on them. These warrants were served. Did any arrests come of it? Did any charges come out of it? Did any convictions come out of it? Did anyone go to prison? What happened to them? And we ended up doing a story that won statewide awards for public service. Because no-knock warrants, we found, produce fewer results, result in greater danger to the public and to the police than the traditional knock and serve a warrant. And as a result, Chief, I think it was Chief Sanchez at the time and Mayor Webb, decided Denver police will not use no-knock warrants as prolifically as they. They would still do it, but there had to be more rigorous, more rigorous affidavits and more rigorous reasons to do no-knock warrants. And that's work that came out of that kind of beat. You know, just notice the grindstone, read the affidavits. We found some interesting stuff that we didn't write, by the way. As with most newsrooms though, we cross-trained. So I did some police reporting and as Dennis mentioned, the murder of Allen Berg was one of the biggest stories in this city. And, and I also covered the Oklahoma City bombing. Lou and I worked together on that, among many people at the paper who worked on it. The biggest story probably was the murder of Allen Berg and the Aryan Nations, Ku Klux Klan, white nationalism, the racketeering, the Rico trial that came out of it in Seattle. Three of us pretty much did it full-time. Gary Gerhart, John Akala and I. We were called the Gang of Three. We traveled at the drop of a hat. Sometimes, you know, both papers were really on top of it. The post beat us on a story, a big story, when the FBI found the gun that was used to kill Berg. It was found in one of the Aryan Nations members' attic at a shrine with an icon of Adolf Hitler and two candles and the gun in front of it. And we missed that. We didn't get that story. We then turned the tables and it was on a Sunday, I remember. Sunday paper dropped on, on the porch of the Denver Post editor. And I bet he called everybody and said, why didn't we have this? But David Lane, the Denver Klansman, who was the getaway car driver the night Berg was killed, was arrested in North Carolina. We got a tip on it. We already had a reporter in the air. We had the front page story on the, on the Sunday Rocky Mountain News. It was just fun. During that trial, I think it was during the sentencing, there was a big scrum of reporters in Seattle. And they were going to have a press conference with the US Attorney, Gene Wilson. And we're waiting and Wayne King, a New York Times reporter that we'd gotten to know, the New York Times had a better expense account than any of us. So we always hung out with Wayne because he always picked up the pad for the drinks. Oh my God. Anybody see the movie Animal House? Just one, two? That reminds me of the scene where they put up the picture of Flounder when they're vetting all the news. So, excuse me. Wayne says to his group, you know, I had a call from an agent in New York. He was reading my stuff in the Times and he wondered if there was a book in all of this. And he said, I told him, eh, there is, I think, but I'm way too busy, I don't have time. So I grabbed Wayne by the lapels and I said, give me that man's name. Because Gary and I were intent on finding an outlet to tell the broader story, not just about the murder of Allen Berg and that they knocked over three armored cars and they robbed banks and they, they killed a few other people and, and they were, you know, they wanted to establish a whites-only nation in the Pacific Northwest. They were going to probably kill hundreds, maybe thousands of people in terror attacks on the city of Los Angeles, knock out the power lines, put cyanide in the reservoirs. We had to tell people about the danger that white nationalism and domestic terrorism in general, right or left, was posing to this nation. And so our agent was Julian Bach, a very well-respected agent in, in New York. And we did a book treatment. We got nineteen rejections. I recently, I cleaned out a file cabinet in my garage and I found all those rejection letters. If anybody's interested in doing a book, my advice to you is someone will publish it. And if you don't have a contract yet, because you haven't found that person yet, just keep trying. Because I did, I did a book after that and I got similar number of rejections before that was published. And so keep at it. Someone will publish your book. Just don't give up. White nationalism has had an ebbing and flowing in this country for generations. You know, the nineteen eighties and the murder of Allen Berg and the Order wasn't the start of anything. It was picking up the baton and continuing, you know, the bombings that occurred in the South in the fifties and the sixties. You know, the church in Birmingham, things like that. We just felt that that story had to be told. The book came out in nineteen eighty-nine, as was mentioned. We had an option for a movie twice in the nineties, but the people who optioned it never got financing. I went on with my life, Gary went on with his life. My partner Gary Gerhart passed away about nine years ago. I wish that he had lived to see this because he was always telling me, this will make a great movie. And I think he was right. So in twenty seventeen, I got an email from a producer and a script writer. And he said, are the movie rights available to this book? And we're thinking of optioning it. And I said, yeah. I was on a cruise on the, going through the Panama Canal, literally during the transit of the Panama Canal. But if, and if you know me, if you work with me at the news, you never stop working. So I can't be away from city business for two weeks. And so at least once or twice a day, I'm answering emails. I said, well, yeah. And it turns out, I got one degree of Kevin Bacon here because the script writer that was partners with the producer is a guy named Zach Baylen. And he is married to the daughter of Councilwoman Mary Beth Sussman, who was my colleague on city councils. Now, this is weird, Kate Sussman. And so October twenty seventeen, we signed a deal. I had to reconnect with my agent. I was hoping he was still alive. This is my second agent, since Julian had passed away. And yeah, he remembered me from the second book. And he agreed to represent us on this. And Gary's widow Nancy is still my fifty percent partner. And finally, in December of twenty-two, we, they got financing from a studio. We negotiated our contract with the studio. And about a week later, they're starting filming. Harriet and I went up to, that's my wife, went up to Calgary to watch some of the filming. I was pleasantly surprised because Harriet said, they'll probably tell you to sit over there, shut up, don't move. They ruin the shot. It was the exact opposite. They gave us director's chairs. They gave us headphones so we could hear the dialogue. They gave us iPads. We could see the two cameras shooting what they were shooting. We could hear everything. During, after they say cut and they set up the next shot, crew, cast would come over and ask me, tell me more about this guy. They all had copies of the book. And tell me more about this character, that character. If anybody, anybody see the movie? The last, the climax scene, the shootout on Whidby Island? That's where they were filming the night we first got there. They filmed till three-thirty in the morning. So we're watching the machine gun through the floor and everything else. Spoiler alert. The guy died. And I was very happy with how the movie turned out. It doesn't track the book exactly. It couldn't because the book is mind-numbingly boring. It has. Gary and I, we were, we were intent on telling this like newspaper reporters. We didn't want to preach. We just want to tell people, what the hell happened here? Where do these people come from? Because most of them had no criminal records. They were, they were radicalized by a very, one very charismatic leader, Bob Matthews, played by Nicholas Holt in the movie. If you saw the movie, you'll notice Nicholas Holt is the only male character. Can I say this? The only male character doesn't say fuck. Because that's how Bob Matthews was, strictly business. He wanted to establish a whites-only nation. He wanted to start a race war. And he was all business. No cross burning, nothing, none of that. Let's get down to business. And that really impressed me, the way Nick Holt played that, that part. We got to have a great conversation with him and with Jude Law, who played the lead FBI agent. Having said all that, and I see, I'm going to get the hook pretty soon. And I'm on the last page, literally. I worry very much. All the effort Gary and I, Gary and I put into that and what we put into our stories, I worry very much about the future of journalism because it's so much under attack today. And one look at that chart reminds you, so much of the journalism is advocating one side or the other. And I worry because if I went up and down my block and knocked on people's doors and said, where do you get your news? It's so fragmented these days that I bet most of my neighbors never heard of ninety percent of the outlets that are represented here. I don't know where they get their news and that worries me. Because there's so little agreement today on what's true and on what's factual. There seem to be fewer and fewer single places where we get what we used to call general interest news. The post continues to be a general interest newspaper, but fewer people subscribe to that than they used to. My hometown paper, as I mentioned, oh, by the way, my hometown paper was purchased by Dean Singleton at one point. The paper where I was city editor in South Jersey was Dean and Dick Scudder's first acquisition, the Gloucester County Times, South Jersey news. And then he bought the Denver Post. I think, you know, you can't swing a dead cat without hitting a newspaper that Dean Singleton bought that I used to be associated with. I thought he was stalking me at some point. There seems to be no common agreement today on our base of knowledge. That's a huge problem in America and I think we're bearing the fruit of that today. It's broken down the civic discussion. I hear from people every day who believe some of the strangest falsehoods about things in which I'm intimately involved. And I know it's false and they believe it. The attacks on media take advantage of this fragmentation. The White House press room now welcomes the Daily Caller and Newsmax. I don't know where, I think I know where they would have ended up on that bell curve. The White House can openly states that its intention is to handpick the journalists who get to cover the president, at least in the briefing room. They attack the media as being elitist because we want to pick who sits in those seats, the White House Correspondents Association. No, no, no. Press secretary is going to pick. And if they don't like what, if you say Gulf of Mexico, you're out. Imagine. I never thought I'd retire as anything but a journalist. It was my dream job. I was dedicated to it. And now as I look at the, at how the landscape has changed, I can only say how lucky I was to have lost my career when I did. I don't envy you. I really don't. In fact, I pray for you. I pray for you every day that you can help establish this. I pray for you every day, that you can help establish a sustainable model that's able to produce unbiased, broad-based, general interest news, so that our civic arena can once again find an equilibrium and lead us out of these dangerous times in which we find ourselves today. And if you can't, then God help us all. On that cheery note, I may have to take any questions unless I've used up all our time.
Couple quick ones.
Couple quick ones? We could do a couple quick ones.
None? Okay, thank you. Oh, go ahead.
No, I was just gonna say, you, Allen Berg got murdered. You were covering these same people, weren't you and Gary in the, the trio nervous?
Oh, this is, this might strike you as funny. It didn't strike my wife as funny at the time. But we did get, I got a death threat. David Lane was in prison at the time, but he didn't like a story I wrote. It was based on information I shouldn't have had, but I did. Harold, you may appreciate this. One of the DA's, when, when Denver DA did not prosecute them for Allen Berg's murder, they ended up in federal court in civil, civil rights trial. But some of the DA's were kind of upset, they really wanted to do the case. So we got a tip, Gary and I, that David Lane had offered to plead guilty if the DA would take the death penalty off the table. And his attorney presented a proffer. Here's what I will testify to as to what happened that night on Adams Street, if you take the death penalty off the table. So we were interviewing one of the deputy DA's, and he says, "Yeah, this proffer right here, this is what, you know, and it's going away, so we can't use it." Then he goes, "I gotta go use the restroom for about thirty minutes." So Gary and I took the... So in the book, if you read the chapter where Berg is killed, that account is based on one of the participants' statements as to what happened. The other three that we, that we, when we interviewed them in prison, of course, they denied it. They would not talk to us about killing Berg. I said, "That's okay, you don't have to, we know." I think that, should we have done that, Carol? Would you have done that?
Taken something off the table?
No, no, would you have read the proffer while the guy was out using a bathroom?
Oh, yeah.
Okay. Thank you. Yeah. So I got a death threat after we reported that, because in the proffer, David Lane stated that he kind of pooped his pants. He was, he was nervous, he was scared, he had... The way we put it in the paper, we said, "He experienced great gastrointestinal distress." And we won the nineteen eighty-five Best of Westward best euphemism of the year. Because we did, we did have that one death threat. I was, the FBI called me, said I should look under my car for a bomb for the next couple months till they figured it out. But, and I'll, I'll end on this.
Okay.
We would get reviews from our publisher, which is now, Simon Schuster has reissued the book, it's under the title The Order, instead of Simon Brother. And I opened my reviews one week that they sent, and I, we got a favorable review from a neo-Nazi group in Oregon. And then the next clipping was a very favorable review from a communist organization in Atlanta. I don't know why a communist would want to live in Atlanta, but they did. The FBI loved it, the members of The Order who were in prison promoted the book, said, "You gotta read this book, that's the only balanced..." That's what Gary and I set out to do, and I'm very proud of the fact that both the Nazis and the communists liked the book.
Well, that was really enlightening. I'm so glad Kevin agreed to come and hear us. One more round of applause. And before we break, so that they can move cheers around in this room, if you would like to hear more about the newspaper wars between the Rocky and the Post, at six-thirty Tuesday night, the Denver Press Club, which is just around the corner from here, by the way, is doing a, just a discussion, open discussion about what the newspaper wars were like and great stories about the Post and the news. It's open to the public, you do not have to be a member of the Press Club to attend. And so, if you want to hear more, please go to the Press Club Tuesday night. On that note, let's take a break, grab more coffee, grab more food, check, and they'll move things around for us, and then we'll start in about a half an hour.